Test one two, test one two.
Ready? We'll now have a meeting of the Medford City Council Resident Services and Public Engagement Committee. Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Counselor Lozaro.
Present.
Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Scarpelli is absent. Counselor Sang. Chair Lemon.
Present or present. Absent, meeting is in order. First thing we're going to do is work on and approve. Potentially approve the monthly, the, sorry, monthly newsletter. Just gonna really quickly share my screen. So I'd like to thank Counselor Lozaro for drafting this month's newsletter and sending it out to, to folks. I drafted a couple of changes to this, just a few minor changes to the, excuse me. Just a few minor changes to the blurb, as well as some minor grammatical changes. Do y'all have access to?
Yeah, my Outlook is just freezing up right now.
Oh, okay. I can put, well, I'm just gonna make sure that. One moment, I can put the link to this one in the Zoom chat if you're on Zoom.
I'm not, but I can do that.
Okay. One more, just going to. Share this. Zoom again. All right. Share. All right, now I'm just gonna paste the sharing link into the chat for this one, I just wanna look over the edits. And, yeah, so basically, it's just a, I think this is getting pretty routine right now, by now, which is great. Basically, just clarified, the only edits I made to Counselor Lozaro's text, which she sent out to the committee yesterday was to have the, was to clarify the status of the Salem Street corridor rezoning. Its status and the Community Development Board. As well as on the Governance Committee, I just wanted to clarify that mainly what we talked about were changes to City Council composition, since that was probably the most. We probably spent the most time discussing that particular topic, so I just figured for clarification purposes, I wanted to add that in there. Then. That is, that's about it, I added a "the" in there, the calendar year 2025. Counselor. Counselor, oh, you see, Counselor Sang put his. Put his up first, I'm just going to. Turn his mic on, Counselor Sang.
Thank you, um, a few notes, the first one about the Governance Committee item, I, I like the edit that you suggested about putting in the, including discussions regarding the change of City Council composition. If we could put in something about how we will make, we, we're keeping discussions open. And taking a final vote in the, a future committee, the whole, that would be, I think, helpful for residents to know that we haven't made any final changes to, um.
Okay.
To this document.
Do you think, uh, do you think we should also clarify exactly what was referred out of governance in that case? I mean, it's not, it's not for sure.
Yeah, um, we haven't referred anything out of governance, but maybe we could say something like, the committee adopted a number of edits which continue to be up for discussion and, um, or can continue to be on the table pending a final vote in a future committee of the whole meeting.
I'm just gonna say the committee referred.
Yeah, uh, the only thing I would say is, it's, we didn't just refer discussion, discussion of this matter or. Any edit, yeah, so, um, of any potential, or any edits, I guess, instead of this matter.
Or for discussion of any potential edits.
Yeah, something along those lines. Um, if we could capitalize committees since proper noun, or, uh, yeah, proper noun.
Sorry, but to me that is a little, like, I would not get from that what I think you mean.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm happy to.
We pushed this off to the, whereas we're still discussing it. If you wanna probably say, no decisions have been made yet.
Okay, yeah, 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 I think that makes sense, something more direct, yeah.
Yeah, a little more.
Yeah. Okay, I. I, I, yeah. We, yeah, we can also move on from this and I can, so that's the language in the meantime. Um, and then the other main question or point I had was, um, I'm noticing in this version of the newsletter in particular, there's a lot of, like, in the general business, there's a lot of, um, points that start with the same, like, at, at the December seventeen meeting, at this meeting, at this meeting. I wonder if we could do one big bullet point or one big header that's just, or not header, but like, one big point that's just like at the December seventeenth meeting, cold and we, and then sub bullet points for the rest. Just to like make it a little bit more readable and to make the, the content stand out a little bit more. But Counselor O'Trell, I mean, you know more about how this can be formatted than I.
Yeah, I would, I would say. Combine, it would probably make it a little bit cleaner to combine the points about C-COPS and the welcoming, the welcoming city ordinance from the January fourteenth meeting. So that's one way to sort of shorten it a little bit. We also. So that, that's. Yeah, and then. January passed a resolution, recreation for more activities. We approved. I don't know if that's a good way to describe it.
Uh, Chair Lemon, do you think you could, um, share edit access to, to me?
Right. I'm going to unshare the screen to keep some emails private, but I'm, I'm not gonna. Hold on. Just added your and Anna's emails to this.
Thank you.
Yep. I mean, we, we really did just do a lot at the January fourteenth meeting. And I'm also just gonna go ahead and combine the two liquor licenses. So.
Those are at two separate meetings, if we don't, if we're not bothered by when the things are happening. It doesn't bother me either, but, I mean. I don't know, the previous newsletters had them separated by date.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I think, I think this is overall pretty good, I'm just gonna wait on Counselor Sang to finish his thoughts on the. Yeah, I, I, I think what you have right there is fine, Counselor Sang. Yep. Counselor Callahan.
Thanks, just two minor edits, uh, the first is under planning and permitting. I believe that we just found out today at planning permitting that. They're not going to be, the CB is not going to be talking about Salem Street on February fifth.
Okay, did they, do you know if they pushed it off?
They pushed it, yeah. So I just don't wanna put February fifth, cause I'm pretty sure that they are not talking about it on February fifth, so.
Okay, I just put it a later date.
Yes, that would be great, and then the second one, and this is very minor, but, um, under public works, the last sentence. We also heard from the Commissioner and City Engineer on the possibility of, uh, the City Engineer did not chime in and nothing to say, so. We, we just removed the City Engineer part of that sentence, the City Engineer was really there to talk about the roads.
We also, wait, so just from the Commissioner, or?
So the last sentence should read, we also heard from the Commissioner on the possibility of, yeah.
Chair, let me just one more thing, um, I think we could just note that we, uh, are beginning work on developing an open data policy at today's meeting. Just for the last point.
Okay. January twenty ninth meeting, yeah, all right. And worked developing an open data policy.
I guess we don't need to get that, that specific.
Yeah, I, I think just, just saying, uh, we began our work developing an open data policy or January twenty ninth meeting is sufficient, I mean, these should be really quick. Bullet points, we also haven't actually had that discussion yet, so we have yet to. But no, I, I, yeah, I think that what we have now is, we have now is fine.
Yeah, just like something like this.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. That's all I, I have to offer, um.
Okay. Any other comments from counselors?
I guess we could, we could put in commemor- commemorations, um, uh, the.
Oh, yeah, the Lunar New Year. Okay. January twenty eighth, we passed a resolution celebrating. Is it Lunar New Year or the Lunar New Year?
Sorry?
Is it Lunar New Year or the, or, never mind.
Oh, yeah, it's just Lunar New Year, I think other cultures also have Lunar New Years, but on different days.
Gotcha, okay, any other comments from counselors? Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the motion to approve the current draft of the newsletter.
Including edits, right.
Including edits by Counselor Callahan, seconded by Counselor Sang, Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, will you please call the roll?
And this is also a motion to distribute the newsletter.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't hear the clerk.
Wait, what, sorry?
The clerk said something I can't hear.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, the, the clerk is, he's still, he's still preparing the, the notes.
Sorry about that.
Your, your apology is accepted, Counselor Lozaro. Sorry.
Roll call vote, Counselor Callahan. Counselor Lozaro.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli is absent, Counselor Sang.
Yes.
Chair Lemon.
Yes, for affirmative, non-negative, the motion passes. Next thing we're gonna discuss is the development of the open data policy, so. We introduced this as something to refer to committee, uh, initially Counselor Sang and myself, and prior to the meeting, um, after Counselor Sang and I did a bit of research on this, we distributed a sample ordinance from the city of Cambridge, as well as an executive order from the city of Boston, which give sample language of other open data policies. We also drafted a couple of questions to, uh, give out to, uh, department heads to just basically get some more information about what kind of data they're sitting on as we, uh, develop some of the parameters of this policy. Counselor Sang, is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I mean, just to, um, give my fellow counselors and anyone who might be watching at home, a general idea of what an open data policy is. It's a, a modernizing practice that a lot of municipalities have adopted to let residents, um, access data and information from the city quicker, um, and to let them help us with policy development. I know, I'll, I know all of us know of residents who are really eager to help out and, um, really excited that a lot of residents are so eager to help out with policy development here, I know, uh, Counselor Callahan does a lot of work with, um, residents on this as well. I think this very much falls in line with the City Council's goals of greater transparency, greater modernization, being more proactive and inclusive, um, when it comes to developing policy too. And I know, you know, members of the public have brought up that with the policy changes in the city, there are, you know, X, Y, Z questions that they wish they could have asked, or X, Y, Z pieces of data they could have had before making decisions on those, or, before giving public feedback about different items, um, or even after, with, with helping us generate, you know, how to, how to make our processes better in the future. This is something that Cambridge, Boston, I believe some other municipalities too. Have taken on themselves, onto themselves of, you know, passing a policy or, via ordinance or executive order. To create some structure, some framework of doing that. And so the Cambridge, um, the Cambridge sample ordinance that you, uh, we have in front of us and in our inboxes is an example of, um, of what this might look like in an ordinance form. Of course, there are very, um, different structures of government between Cambridge and Medford, um, so that's something to keep in mind while we're reading the draft. But I thought it would be helpful to give counselors some sample text to work off of, to give us a more concrete idea of what this policy might look like. The, the Boston Executive Order is also in the document, um, obviously, an executive order is very different from an ordinance, but it's still worth, you know, seeing, um, what other municipalities are doing, um, and, you know, giving us inspiration as to maybe like, what goals we should aspire to, what possible paths policy-wise can we take to get there? With the questions that, um, the bullet point questions that we have in front of us and in the inbox, and maybe I should read them real quick.
I can, I can read them.
Okay, the chair can read them, but, um, to give context, um, Chair Lemme and I have been talking for, for a bit about what kind of information we might wanna gather and put publicly on our website. And, you know, these are the questions that we came up with, we're happy to add more questions from other counselors to this list, and of course, as we develop this policy and as we work on this, we can keep asking more questions to the administration and to, um, different city departments too. Something I did forget to mention is that oftentimes, an open data policy is, um, is introduced alongside a committee to work through this data, to help clean up this data, to help think of like, um, of more data in the future to make sure that this is a recurring cycle, not just like, we're doing this at once, and then we, we have to revisit this as a city council every, every, uh, few years. But obviously, with, also with putting data online, um, we also have to be aware and cognizant of security concerns with, um, with that conversation as well.
So, before I go to other counselors, I will just, um, I'm not gonna read through the entirety of the Cambridge and Boston sample ordinances, but given that Cambridge and Boston tend to be a lot more well-financed to support things like this. I do, I developed a list of questions for our, for some of the department heads that I think have relevant, uh, data sets, along with just inquiries about their staff capacity to implement these things, so the first question goes to the mayor, which is just, what does the administration view as practical concerns to enacting an open data policy along the lines of Boston and Cambridge's policies? And this is because it is, the mayor is, uh, the person in charge of department heads, so, um, they will, they do have a lot of ability in overseeing this even with the ordinance enacted, uh, the general question for department head, the general request for the mayor is to request that city departments report to the Resident Services and Public Engagement Committee on what data or records are currently commonly requested them, what data or records they collect, and what data or records they would feel open to sharing with the public, and why or why not. I also thought of, uh, six or, uh, five other departments that I know I've specifically worked with or tried to work with their data in the past, so that, these are just kind of more targeted questions, first, the elections office. How far back does elections data historically go, both in a digital format and paper archives, and do you have the staff capacity and resources to, to digitize Medford's election data from before two thousand and five, so this one in particular is interesting, because the elections website just kind of posts PDFs and sort of inconsistent formats, um, and the data only goes back to two thousand and five. I do know that they have paper records in the basement that go back further, but I, I do need to respect the staff capacity of the elections office when it comes to their ability to go down there and write down all of those data points from previous generations. Even though I personally would like to, would be interested in seeing it, from the finance office, how far back does Medford digitize budgetary data go? Are there legal or ethical concerns with publishing the bulk data in an analyzable format? And do you have the staff capacity and resources to, to publish bulk budgetary data consistently for public use? The idea behind this one is that usually budget data is published in, uh, either different meeting records or in the big PDF that's released every year, and that's excellent, but it would be useful to have data in a kind of more of a spreadsheet format, so that could be analyzed with software, so that residents can track, if they wanted to, different uses of the budget over time and how that's evolved over the years, which I think would help inform the public conversation around this. From the assessor's office, how far back does Medford's historic assessor's data go? Are there legal or ethical concerns publishing bulk property value assessment data in analyzable format? And do you have the staff capacity and resource to publish bulk assessors' data consistently for public use? Uh, so the assessor's data right now publishes everything via, the Vision Government Solutions website, which is actually, so all assessment data is available online. But again, if you wanted to analyze like the average assessment value of all Medford property, or the all Medford property and like West Medford or something like that, it would be very difficult to do that via what's currently available. I do know that the assessor's office has internal data that they use, that they could just put online in spreadsheet formats, but I don't think this is a big ask. From the DPW, does the DPW spreadsheet data internally to keep track of road repairs, streets and so on, how far back does this data historically go? Are there any legal or ethical concerns with publishing this data openly? Again, just residents wanna see how, what roads are being repaired and just being able to analyze that historically, so that's more of an open end one. And from the building department, the same question about any bulk historic data for inspections, permitting requests and so on, that would be publishable as a database for the properties around Medford, legal, procedural, ethical concerns with publishing the data, the, uh, how far back did that data go historically? And the staff capacity question. So, um, the motion on the floor would be to send these questions out to the mayor and the relevant department heads, um, but I'm also interested in hearing if my colleagues have any thoughts or anything that they would like to add. Counselor Callahan and then Counselor Lozaro.
Yeah, these are great, I love the fact that you're, um, for each one of these, you're asking, does staff have the capacity? Do you see any ethical concerns, you know, these are, these are great questions to ask to everybody. I would just ask the mayor's office as well, what other data aside from these she thinks would be interesting? Or might be helpful to the, to the community, um, I don't know if the health department has data that would be interesting or helpful to the community to understand over time. You know, there are other, maybe other departments, um, you know, we have, our housing department isn't really small. Not even a department, but, you know, would housing data that we have over time, like, there are other things that might be useful, and, and so just adding that one question to the mayor's office, that would be good, thanks.
Would we be able to just, um, add that to, cause in the second line, the general request, I think, covers a lot of what you mentioned. And so request to the mayor and city departments to report to this committee, anything that they think would be interesting essentially. Counselor Lozaro.
Thank you, I appreciate you bringing this forward, it's something that I'm not very familiar with, so I appreciate people with greater awareness and understanding of these topics to bring it to the floor and, and bring it to, um, the departments in the city where it's appropriate. My hesitation comes from the awareness that our city hall is pretty, um, minimally staffed, kind of bare bones to some degrees, and, uh, that if a, a project like this would be difficult to pull off, or would ask, um, city hall staffers to engage in something that's beyond their capacity, or would, or we would have to, or really, if, is this like a budgetary thing, would we have to, um, add this to the budget, is there gonna be a cost associated with that, I'm curi- I'm, I'm asking, cause I don't know.
I could take that, but I see that, uh, Counselor Sang, uh, also. Did you wanna, did you wanna address that, or did you have your own? Yeah, so. This, this does come with the caveat in a lot of these questions, um, about staff capacity, so we, we are asking, we, so we are asking. So we we are asking, we so we are asking that, and that is a concern, especially if, I mean, we can't just copy the, we can't just copy the open data policies of cities that have a much larger budget than ours wholeheartedly, but there are, the point of these questions is to sort of figure out if there are low hanging fruit. I hate that term, but it's a, it's a, it is used to describe the situation. And that they could just easily post to their website. So I know, for instance, that that's the case of the assessor's office. They already work with spreadsheet data internally, and it would really wouldn't be any skin off their back to just put it on to to just put it on to the website instead of the typical databases. And with the with the elections office, like it's really not that much data. It's really just typing out the spreadsheets that they normally publish in PDF formats into something that's a little bit cleaner. Counselor. But but yeah, that is a concern. Counselor saying. Did you? Yep.
Thank you. I think that more or less captures what I was thinking. I think as we, as this becomes a bigger thing, as you know, once we've gotten past that step of low hanging fruit, I I this is something I haven't talked to Council Lemming about, but I do envision in an ideal world, this becoming a bigger project after that step. And I alluded to this earlier, a lot of cities will do something called an open data review board. And you know, that might be staff members who get a stipend, that might be community members who we appoint and who have some interests slash, you know, work experience dealing with this kind of stuff, organizing data and whatnot. Perhaps that is the path that we 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 reach, you know, that's the the path that we take moving forward. But I also think that, you know, that question is the kind of farther future thing. And I don't, I think it'd be a little premature to take on that discussion right now.
Counselor Callahan and then Counselor Lozaro.
Thanks. Counselor Lozaro, I so appreciate you bringing that up. I do think that that's a real concern, given the skeletal nature of many of our departments. And I guess what I would say is staff capacity is a question people can answer many ways. People could say, well, if you pass it, we have to do it. So yes, you have the staff capacity. They could say, no, we don't have the staff capacity because we're all already at our max, even if it's five minutes, right? So I think adding a question of a rough cost estimate would be more helpful because that would, some people might say, yeah, that'll, you know, it would take me two hours to do everything. And that's one thing. And another person might be like, yeah, that's going to be like five hours a week for the next six months, right? So I think having an idea of what each department thinks might be the cost to putting it up for the first time and or keeping it maintained, I think that would be helpful information.
I guess something we could add to all the questions.
Counselor Lozaro was.
Oh, sorry, I was just writing. Could I?
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, Counselor Lozaro, something we could add to that point is just in addition to the staff capacity and resources question, just like what capacity you need to take.
Okay, we could add that as an additional bullet point under general. Counselor Lozaro.
Thank you. I I think my point here is I've just been thinking a lot lately about how I think it's important that we, this is sort of a big picture issue, but I think it's important that we as a council, and I'm not saying that this is not an important issue, but I think it's it's critical that we focus our attention to the greatest degree possible on the things that are most critical for our residents. This is the Resident Services Committee. I know that this is important, but also if we have an extra extra time available in any department, I I can't imagine that anybody has extra time because Boston and Somerville and Cambridge all have staff in all of their departments that are like many times larger than the staff in our departments. And they also have many more departments than we have. They have an Office of Housing Stability, for instance, which we do not possess. Like Counselor Callahan just said, like, we don't have any departments to deal with housing at all. So, you know, as as good as it is to have open data and things posted online to help people, when people are like not able to find a place to live, they don't have anything that they can do to help. So like the data wouldn't really necessarily be as critical in that moment. So I I am curious to hear if this is something that we could put a dollar amount on. I would like to know what it would be. And if there's something, if there's, if there's funding that we need to find for it, we should find funding for it. And I just, I want to make sure that we're not giving anybody unplanned mandates because there's enough of that statewide. All of that stuff is just difficult to manage. So I'm just putting it out there into the universe. I still, I think this is still a good initiative. I'm not saying it's not good. I'm just saying I'm thinking about that stuff more and more lately. Thank you.
Counselor saying.
Respectfully, I worry that we're putting the cart before the horse and missing the forest for the trees are, is that, how is it missing? Have a long day working.
Missing the horse through the forest.
Yeah, missing the horse through the forest.
Something like that.
I think Counselor Lemming and I are just really thinking big picture about this right now. And I think a lot of your concerns are caps captured in the questions that we're asking, plus the one that I just added about like general capacity and resources that we need. I I will also say it is my view that this level of transparency should be the standard that that municipal governments are putting out, in fact, governments at all levels should be putting out. And that part of the idea behind doing a policy like this is also that many hands make like light work, which I also have a problem with that saying, but I think in this case is true. I, you know, there's a lot of work that I think our residents want to see our departments doing, but we don't have, our departments don't have that capacity right now. But maybe if we put on, you know, put some of this data out in public, they could do that work and propose the policies for us. And then we can, you know, enter these policy discussions at a level where, you know, residents have done the research and we can, we can start engaging with that there.
So, yeah, I also did address my counselor Lozaro's point. So my my thinking on this is like when residents are discussing a budget, oftentimes those discussions do get a little bit, let's say, misdirected because it is, unless you've like dug through those giant PDFs before, it's a little bit difficult to find them. Whereas if hypothetically, a bunch of Excel sheets of budgetary data were available for multiple years, then you could get like a few residents who are very interested in that to just like comb through those and like really be able to find out what the patterns are. I think the state does a very good job of providing that data at a very bird's eye view for the city. Now, I think that staff capacity to support this would really come into play when like if we're like asking departments to develop these databases or APIs and stuff like that, which is mentioned in the Cambridge's open data policy. I just don't think that we have the software engineering capacity to do that, to do that. But if but if it's something as simple as asking the assessor's office to publish their PDFs or sorry, their Excel spreadsheets of historical assessment data openly so that that can be combed through. I think that's a good place to start. That wouldn't have too much staff capacity. Counselor Lozaro.
Yes, so I agree with that. And I also wanted to say that I think that having, even if you have a list of best practices and like a like a goals document or like a phase one, phase two, phase three kind of document, I think that's a really good thing to have. My work in nonprofit, in the nonprofit sphere, I work in a the warming center where it's we're extremely scrappy. We can't actually achieve a lot of our best practice goals operationally. So sometimes we have like this is what we would like to be able to do. This is what we're actually doing because this is what we're capable of. So I mean, I think that that's still, it's still good to start some someplace. So that's, I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Yeah, no, I I always appreciate good conversations here about staff capacity because we we do need to be realistic about that. And that does tend to dominate a lot of conversations in this room, so it's always welcome. But in any case, Counselor saying, did you record in a master document all of the proposed edits that we've been speaking about so far? No, I think I think that was that was about it. There was requests that the mayor and city departments, I suppose, would capture Counselor Callahan's initial comment on that. That could be an additional one, but otherwise I think that that's pretty much everything.
Sorry?
Otherwise, I think that that's that's every, all the edits that we discussed so far.
Yep, yep, yeah. I can, I can send this to you, Mr. Chair, first and and the clerk too, just to make sure I didn't miss anything, but that's, I think we have everything.
Okay. You can email it to me? Or, okay.
And I would, I would motion then that we send these questions to to the department heads and city administration as we've directed. And since Emily's online, I would also motion, put in that motion, motion adjourned.
Do we have a second?
Again.
Okay, on the what? What? Oh, amen. One moment, I'm gonna. Sorry. Everybody's. Sorry, sorry, I'm like doing a, I'm doing a, okay, okay, for the amendment, just.
Can we send it to the mayor first?
Wait.
Give the mayor a heads up before we send it to the department.
Sure, yeah. That's my assumption was it was going to go to the administration first.
To the mayor first and then.
Can I jump in? The protocols for me would be would be either for me or for the committee chair to send it to, to send it to the chief of staff with a request, which means it would go to the mayor if we said, or we can copy the mayor on that. And then, and the the further would request would be that it would go to department heads, and they might direct it back to us saying, you can send it to department heads.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But that, but but that's the general protocol is that is that either either I or the committee chair would send it out to the chief of staff. You know, with, so in other words, that the mayor would get it as part of the process.
Thank you so much.
Either through the chief of staff or directly on the email.
Thanks.
Okay.
Are you, do you need to amend?
Okay. On the motion by Counselor saying, I believe I actually heard Counselor Lozaro second, second that one.
Yeah, I seconded it from from over here.
Yes, yes, counselor, I think, I I feel like people who attend on Zoom often miss the valuable seconds. So I'm going to say that it was Counselor Lozaro who seconded it this time. Apologies to all. So.
No more Zoom ratio.
Clerk, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan. Counselor Lozaro.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli is absent. Counselor saying, yes, Chair Lemming.
Yes. Four in favor, one absent, motion passes, meeting is adjourned.